Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. If you could please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, we gather today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us tonight, and always act, always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight, Tuesday, January 15th, at 6:33 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
President Zizuka.
Here.
Alderman Braun.
Here.
Alderman Brube.
Present.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Here.
Alderman Tyle.
Here.
Also in attendance, Mayor Pappas and City Attorney Luke Brown.
All right, and at this point, Mayor, do you have any opening comments before we begin?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. At this point, then, we will have anybody who has any comments on the agenda and pertaining to the agenda only to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak on tonight's agenda, step forward. Seeing that there's none, we'll roll the agenda.
Approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting, January 2nd, 2019. I need a motion.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Approval of the minutes of the regular session, January 2nd, 2019. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Approval of the minutes of the special session, January 8th, 2019. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Proof of publication, published 11/8/2018, legal notice, public hearing to review the 2019 preliminary budget. City Clerk Treasure, proof of publication, published 11/30/2018, legal notice, notice of foreclosure of tax lien, City Clerk Treasure. Proof of publication, published 11/30/2018, legal notice, notice of foreclosure of tax lien, City Clerk Treasure. Proof of publication, published 12/15/18, 12/27/18, and 1/7/19, legal notice, notice of foreclosure of tax lien, City Clerk Treasure. I need a motion to accept proof of publication.
I'll make the motion, receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Communications from city officials, communications from the mayor's office regarding reappointment of Susan Hempel, Wild Duell, William Penn, and Michael Carney to the Housing Authority, do a motion to receive and file.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Communication from the attorney's office regarding the amendment to contract of sale between the City of North Tonawanda and Armstrong Pumps.
Can we have Luke explain that?
Sure.
Why don't we, why don't we first go through a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
I'll make the motion that we accept the amendment here.
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
So as I noted in my letter, initially, the city had entered a contract with Armstrong Pumps for the purchase of property at the Buffalo Mill Site back in 2013. Since then, Armstrong has kind of been on and off about whether they want to expand. So we tried to put some pressure on them to try and either close or cancel the contract. Instead of potentially having some extensive litigation, we were able to sit down and hash out this amendment, which requires several benchmarks that you need by next month or the contract will become void and we'll keep the deposit of $5,000 if they've already put down. So it's just an attempt to resolve that, that contract one way or another.
Great. And just as another note, after we do motion second, there should be on the question, and then, all in favor. But, okay. So, all in favor then, I guess.
All in favor.
This would be a roll call.
Okay, let's do it. Yeah, let's do it. It's a financial. So, Austin, we need to do a roll call. Can I have roll call on this item?
Alderman Braun.
Aye.
Alderman Brube.
Aye.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Aye.
Alderman Tyle.
Aye.
Alderman Zizuka.
Aye. Motion carried.
Communications from the Office of Superintendent of Water-Wastewater regarding boarding a bid for the wastewater treatment plant, West Storm Bar Screen Project.
I'd like to make a motion, or actually, you know what, let's do roll call on this item as well.
Motion.
Well, motion and I'll make the motion. We have motion and we have a second, we have roll call.
Alderman Braun.
Aye.
Alderman Brube.
Aye.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Aye.
Alderman Tyle.
Aye.
Alderman Zizuka.
Aye. Motion carried.
We're getting communications from the Office of the Superintendent of Water-Wastewater, approval of professional services agreement for engineering work on the NYSEFC to a Grand Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements project phase number one.
I'm going to make the motion because Wendell Engineering was the one that originally was hired to do our capital improvement plan on this water wastewater, and they've been doing a fabulous job, and I think they deserve to move out and phase this.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this, please?
Alderman Braun.
Aye.
Alderman Brube.
Aye.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Aye.
Alderman Tyle.
Aye.
Alderman Zizuka.
Aye. Motion carries.
Communication from, oh, I'm sorry, accountant, regarding the payment of abstract of claims dated January 15th, 2019.
I'll make the motion to pay the abstract.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call, please?
Alderman Braun.
Aye.
Alderman Brube.
Aye.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Aye.
Alderman Tyle.
Aye.
President Zizuka.
Aye. Motion carries.
Communications from the Department of Youth Recreation and Parks regarding permission for group golfer to promote and sell discounted golf vouchers for Deerwood Golf Course.
I'll make that motion, then we give them permission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Communications from the Department of Youth Recreation and Parks regarding permission for the Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper to lead and oversee the shoreline restoration project at the Botanico Gardens on Sweeney Street.
I'd definitely like to make a motion on that, to give them permission to do that.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Monthly reports, Clerk Treasure, Police Department can have a motion to receive and file.
I'll make the motion. Second.
What do you want, second or first?
You can, you can go first.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second from Alderman Tyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Annual reports, Police Department and Clerk Treasure, motion to receive and file.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor to receive the annual reports.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Community Development regarding permission to distribute a development request for proposals for 78th Bridge Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's have roll call on this item, please.
Alderman Braun.
Aye.
Alderman Brube.
Aye.
Alderman Pecoraro.
Aye.
Alderman Tyle.
Aye.
President Zizuka.
Aye. Motion carries.
Regarding the community development, this acceptance of North Tonawanda Brownfield Opportunity Area Final Environment Impact Statement, this is going to be pulled from the agenda by the executive director. For further discussion, yeah, at our workshop next week.
All right.
Communications from others, Historic Preservation Commission regarding permission to use the Carnegie Arts Center Friday, January 18th, 2019.
So information, motion. So moved.
I'll second.
I jumped it, I jumped. Sorry. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Gateway Harbor of the Tonawandas, permission, regarding permission to close the Delaware Street Bridge, March 3rd, 2019, for the annual Green Beer Sunday Parade.
The initial request asks for them to also use Gateway, and I'm going to amend it because Gateway Park is under construction right now. So we will close, I make the motion that we close the bridge for the parade, but they're going to have to find an alternate until they can work things out for Gateway. They cannot use it in its current state. So that's the motion I'm going to make.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From Grammick Host Company regarding permission to remove Roger Beam from the fire rolls.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Can I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
From Grammick Host Company regarding exemption petition for six years of service, 25 years, Melanie Keller, Robert Roskow, five years, Terry Lent.
Can I make the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
North Tonawanda Middle School regarding permission to hold their seventh annual 5K and One Mile Family Fund Run, Saturday, April 6th, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From Jesse Gooch regarding permission to use the Grammick Park for the Thursdays on the Water Council starting June 20th, August 2000, or August 29th, to August 29th, 2019. Do a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, at this point, we will move on to any comments on any city business for the good of the city. Please step forward and state your name and address at the microphones.
I respectfully request to use the first portion plus the second portion for my comments.
Are you allowed for five minutes?
I'm okay with this. I'm okay with that.
Is that the way everyone feels?
No. Sonia, I would allow you to have both five minutes.
I'm here in North Tonawanda, Sonia Duzo, 123 Miller Street. I didn't see this document until I went on the website, it wasn't there. Tonight's agenda was not on our website. This is getting worse and worse. This is unacceptable. How can you make these decisions when you haven't even published this for the citizens to read? Maybe if they saw it, read it, they would be here. I tell you, it gets worse. With respect to community development, and I'm taking notice, I do not see the community development person here.
He's here.
He's right there.
There he is. Okay. Dale Marshall? Dale Marshall? Code Enforcement? I don't see them here. These would be some of the people helping you in what your decision is as to whether you accept or reject the final EIS. I want to ask each and every one of you, Mr. Pecoraro, Mr. Tyle.
Sonia, if I could interrupt you for a second, we did not, we tabled the environmental impact statement tonight for the workshop on Tuesday.
You missed it.
So we did not vote on that tonight.
What about the other one?
We voted on that.
78th Bridge Street.
And what did you vote?
We voted yes, and we voted yes because we talked about it at the workshop last Tuesday in great detail.
In public, yes.
Yep, Mike gave a presentation, so.
I read this earlier this, last year, 2018. I'm asking you, each of you, did you read the Seeker, New York State Seeker, Mr. Pecoraro?
I did.
You read it right through?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Tyle?
Yeah.
Mr. Zizuka?
Yep.
Mrs. Braun?
Yes.
Do you know, and I'm thinking, because of what you said, I thought you know there are things that have not been done. There are things, for example, on the BOA, and possibly you tied it in with the Momentum document. I brought this up again the last two years and years before that. North Marion is residential, it's not M1. And that is a predicate to your making statements in the Seeker. There have been things that have been done which were wrong, not legal, probably malfeasance, and for that reason, if you would have taken this tonight, you would have been really in showing you're not governing well, and even worse than that, you're not doing your job. I can emphasize, in these kinds of forum, five minutes, shut up and sit down, is not enough. I didn't even, let me, let me say very briefly on this, page 65 of this well-known law firm in Albany, I believe, environmental assessment forms. The lead agency shall publish or cause to be published on a publicly available website. Good luck. Parentheses, that is free of charge, closed parentheses. The draft and then final scopes in the draft and final EIS is the website posting of such scopes and statements may be discontinued one year after all necessary federal, state, and local permits have been issued or after the action is funded or undertaken, whichever is later. Printed filings and public notices shall clearly indicate the address of the website at which such filings are posted. We didn't do that.
Well, we'll have Mike come up to talk about that.
We haven't done it for...
You have, you have 10 seconds, and then Mike can answer what you have to say there.
Mike, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, every publication for the secret process has been published. Yeah. I said every publication for the secret process has been published on the EMB, the Environmental Notice Bulletin, which is the New York State TDC's clearinghouse website. But it's in every notice that that's where we're publishing.
That's not, that's not the same as what I just read. In the EMB, even when I saw it, it was showing it's in Erie County. So anybody looking on the Edward County, they will find it. Why? They published it, the state, in Erie County, Section 9. There is so much wrong. It's like, oh my God. You know, and the way this was done started in 2008 incrementally, and then I just reminded, we need a planning department. We need a planner. Mike, as he said to me, Sonia, I'm not the city's planner. We need someone who is working for the city, the citizens of this city, not for wink, wink, friends and family and developers. No, this is wrong. And if anybody reads the BOA, Brownfield Opportunity Areas, clearly, it's, this has been put together for the developers. And if you go on the last page, I think appendices, when I read all the different places for grants getting, I thought, oh my God, this is why the taxes are so high in North Tonawanda.
Sonia, you're over your five minutes. I let you go over about a minute and a half.
There's, there's so much here. And, you know, here's the other thing, about the waterfront, this was the very last thing.
Sonia, there's no other thing, no. We're all set. If you'd like to take a seat and let someone else have a chance, please.
I'll wrap it up with saying to you, you know what, we haven't had citizen participation, even in UVs work. It's been pointed out. Bringing Outer Harbor back to life as designs are unveiled, public is urged to weigh in recreation options that range from promenades to playgrounds and benches to boat launches. It's not that we're doing it for a developer or two. We want people to enjoy our waterfront. We're not doing the same thing.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mike, would you want to follow any of that, because Matt also has a comment.
Sonia, I just would like to address your first comment regarding the website. As you and I did speak in length earlier today when you stopped in my office, I do sincerely apologize for the website and things not being up there currently. I'm still getting accustomed to putting things on the website. With your, you know, permission and grace, I would like maybe a couple of days of being in the job, and then I will certainly keep that website up to date. So I do apologize, and you and I did speak about this before. So, again, that's my fault.
It's not your fault. You came into it.
Well, it is my fault since the last day.
But you know what, it's not your fault. You came into this.
Well, thank you, Sonia, thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Anything else that you'd like to say about that, Mike? Everything, any response to that? The only thing I have to say is that we did not accept the amendment, the amendment to this contract of sale for the, all right, we should say, the acceptance of the Brownfield Opportunity Final Environment Impact Statement. We did not do that tonight. You missed that before you had come in. So there was nothing determined on that right now.
Why is that?
Because Mike is going to bring into a workshop to discuss it fully.
Are you going to invite the people to?
A workshop, any workshop you want to come to, you're welcome to. Next, do you need to step up and say anything in the greater good of the city here?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Parrish for his appointment. Now I have a question, I want to direct this to Mr. Tyle. Mr. Tyle, a few weeks ago, I gave you my Commissioner Adid's slip application, and it never showed up on the agenda. I don't know if you, I know Mr. Parrish is new, okay. I understand that, and I'm not criticizing you. But do we have a communication problem between the city clerks and you? Is there a problem getting stuff put on the agenda? Thank you.
Mark, to answer that too, I asked Matt again after you brought it up, but I think probably the switch of clerks maybe
I understand that. I was the lady man.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if there was a communication problem, if anybody was having a prob, getting a prob, having a problem putting anything on the agenda.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion. So, but we will get you another form just in case if it got somehow lost in the...
No reflection. All right, thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward and state your name and address.
Diane Zikowski, 1230 East Robinson Street. I'm here on behalf of Glory Be the Kids Incorporated. We are 501(c)(3) nonprofit charity. And every year, we raise money through sporting events. The city has been very good to us in our events. We started with the death of a teammate, for those of you that don't know, and in honor of her and Felicia Rogo, who was her good friend, we donate $500 every year to the City Rec Department for the youth program as a pit for work. This year, our charity is Stone Buddies. They are out of O'Shy Hospital. They take care of the needs of chronically ill adolescent males and their isolation issues, and they help their families find the resources that they need to help their kids and to help the families cope with the long-term care that these kids are undergoing. So that's our this year's tournament. Last year's charity was Kegley's Kindness. Our organization gave them $39,258 last week for their program for adolescent girls.
Wonderful.
Great job. We appreciate all the give back and the share for the community that you guys do with your organization.
And also, Glory Be the Kids does a lot of functions in the city of North Tonawanda, so we're very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on any other city business for the good of the city, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Big Mike, 196 South Metal Drive, North Tonawanda, New York. Been going to the council meeting for the last couple of weeks. Your council people do a heck of a job out there. Every time, son, they get up and bash the council every time. I don't like that. If anybody thinks they can do any better than the council, all Big Mike's got to say is, why don't you run for office? I think the council officials that are up here tonight are doing a decent job, and I don't think they should be getting bashed every month. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward, state your name and address. Anybody else? Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to closing comments, starting with Alderman Austin Tyle.
So, as you all know, last week, I had requested that an attendance resolution had been to be put on this agenda and did not make it. And I was hoping to get some clarification as to why something that I submitted did not make the agenda.
I can answer, if you want to.
Let me just step in real quick. It is, as I am to understand, the agenda is at the discretion of the council, and the council president has the final say in what goes on there, so that is why.
Do you, where did you get the reference from? Because I scoured the codes. We have nothing that actually references that. And even, you know, the suggested sort of state laws would say that every legislative person on that body can submit whatever they want, and then the majority has the opportunity to vote for or against tables and so on. So...
But it wasn't a completed document as we concluded at the last workshop.
It, it actually doesn't matter if it's in your eyes completed. If I choose to submit something, I am in all rights to do that.
You can submit it, but then...
But then it should show up on the agenda.
Did you, yeah, but did you try to bring it to the floor?
Otherwise, you're just censoring me.
No. Did you bring it to the floor for, for, to be added to the agenda?
I actually, at the end of the meeting, I said I would like it on the following.
Oh, I know what you said, but we just got a finalized document today.
Doesn't matter, again, because I changed the wording.
I don't vote on things that aren't completed.
So if I could reference again, which I actually did give you the amendments to it, the changes were to determine what city officer meant, which I did. And I also added Luke's comments that were made at the last workshop, so we get...
And then in conclusion, you said, I'd like to see this on the next council agenda at the bottom of that, correct?
Right.
Okay, so that means that you were okay with putting it on for the next meeting.
Right, and so why is it not here?
The next meeting, meaning when you're over today. I just got the final copy today. Now, my, my question is, we received this, we had a number of concerns. We said we'd get a final document together. One of the questions that was still up in the air was whether or not the city official part had to be something that we opened the charter for. I heard yes, I heard no, and I heard we have to look into it.
No, no, that wasn't actually something.
I'd like to hear it from Luke, because he's the attorney.
Luke, did we discuss that? Is there any reason why we'd have to open the charter to put this?
No, there's no reason to open the charter, and I stated at one of the workshops for appointed officials, it doesn't need to be a charter revision, it just needs to be a resolution. So I, that was a change I suggested to Alderman Tyle that he incorporated into his resolution that you put forward.
Okay. So, other than that, I did incorporate all comments made by council people at multiple workshops and other communications, emails, face-to-face, and it seems that in your eyes, this would be a completed form, because I've yet to hear any modifications other than that. So, so really, to go back to the question is, if an elected person wants to submit something to the agenda for the people to see that is discussed, it should be done, so.
Well, you can also bring it to the floor, and if you get a second, then we vote... Well, you can also bring it to the floor, and if you get a second, then we vote on.
But, but the point being is, it was initially requested, and I was denied for a reason that no one can really specify or point to some law.
I have to wholeheartedly disagree that no one can. Because, did you hear from anybody on your, on your initial inquiry that we were going to put it on from any of the other council meetings?
It doesn't, it doesn't actually matter, um, because a council person can put whatever they want. And everything that goes on this agenda that we looked at today, I was not, uh, referenced for each item.
I disagree with your, with your interpretation, I disagree with that.
Yeah, so everything that ended up on this agenda, I wasn't called up or emailed or asked about, which, not that I have any issues with any of these, but, um, the same instance plays here, and it seems like it's sort of a political partisan reason as to why.
Well, I, I think what you said today was you'd be bringing it forward for the next meeting, which is not tonight.
Right, so it's just disappointing that the majority of the council members, fellow council members, are misleading our new clerk, thinking that council people can't submit items.
I disagree with your opinion.
So, opinion and law are two different things, I think, in this situation.
Well, it's your interpretation, because we don't have a finished document to proceed with, although you call it a finished document.
What would be finished about it, Eric?
Well, finished in the fact that, I, I, I was told two different things at that workshop. One, that we had to look into it as a city official versus someone that sits on a committee. I was also told that there are bylaws for some of the committees, I don't know if you researched it, that have, they have attendance, uh, requirements.
Uh, Dan Green, the former clerk, actually said there were no bylaws that he could reference, so.
I think Art had researched it and we had found some.
Can you give me a reference then?
The only thing I can think of off the top of my head, there is a section in the charter which deals with the agenda that ties it in with the board, um, council president, and the city clerk treasurer.
What is, what is, what's the section, do you have a section or more detail or anything to that?
It, it just talks about the agenda, if you want to stop in the office after I'll tell it to you. I, I don't know the number of.
Regardless, too, whatever we pass is more or less an umbrella of an attendance policy, and I think it makes it more uniform also.
And I, and I think I agreed with your last statement that it would get on the next agenda. However, that wasn't something that was determined in stone to be tonight.
Determined in stone to be tonight?
Yeah.
I had requested that this would be on the council, the next council meeting.
But didn't you make changes?
You made changes.
Which the changes.
Which you sent out today.
Today the changes were made, that is not acceptable for the agenda.
I don't, I don't have a problem with anybody, um, submitting something to us to vote on, but I think it should be a finished product.
So, Donna, can I ask you? The, the only thing that changed was, instead of saying city officers, it says the appointed officers, advisory board members, and commission members. Do you think that takes a week to process?
No, but we have a deadline to formulate the agenda, and it was Thursday.
So I, I did submit something to the agenda Tuesday, which is documented as a request, and it is not here. And if we wanted to amend something, that can be done as well. I think we're just going to.
So do you want us to vote on it and not, I mean, do you?
Did you not read that?
And table it.
And table it?
Did you, you can, the, the council can do whatever it wants with any item that's on here. All I'm saying is if a council member wants to submit something, they have the right, because they are the voice for the people, right?
You know what, no one said you couldn't bring it up. It just wasn't on the agenda. If you wanted to bring it up as a point of order and bring it up for the, and have it added to the agenda, you could have made a motion and you could have saw if you had a second. You did not do that tonight.
So, so Eric, let me clarify. If, if a council person on this committee of this council wants to submit anything, uh, to the agenda, what is the process? What is our sort of in stone procedure for doing so?
Well, that we've vetted it out and that we've all in agreement that it's a completed document, which it was not. The final copy was sent today after the agenda deadline of last Thursday.
That's, that's not parliamentary procedure, though, that, that it's a completed document. That's a subjective.
It's always the procedure, we don't deliberate, we don't deliberate on traffic safety minutes without going over them, do we?
Right, but it's on the agenda, right?
Not, if there's, there can be things that aren't put on there if we don't vote on them or we don't agree with them. We send it back for reevaluation.
Uh-huh, but we are each an elected person, that, that's a different standard than committee people that are appointed. So, I mean, if you're against an attendance policy, that's a whole different question.
And, and we said that last time we were not. So I, I, I don't know why you're not referring to the workshop. You know, I'm not going to have an argument going on. If that's how you figure is a constructive method to deal with a situation, you're incorrect. I'm following your email today, and your email today said, um, I'd like this to go on to the next agenda meeting. Did not say I'm upset that it didn't make it to today's meeting. So, it seems like a grandstand.
Today just talked about a revised version, which included that.
That's what we needed, we needed it last Thursday.
That defined, so it was actually submitted on Tuesday and requested in the email, um, to all of us? I sent it to all of us?
Your final comment on today's email was, I'd like to see this on the next agenda.
I find it, I find your comments very hypocritical, especially what you did. Let me explain. What you did to us on Tuesday during a work session to pass a Carnegie resolution for a special event, you asked, and we delayed proceedings for fifteen minutes for a legal ruling, and now you're saying, well, I, you know, the public didn't see my document, but I want to have this voted on. So I find what you did last week and what you do this week not correct.
No, so Bob, that's a good point, actually. What we did last week is, um, from what I understand, against our charter, uh, we actually have to get twenty-four hours notice, and you emailed us eight hours beforehand, and actually, the president of the council, which would be Eric, would be the person who only has the opportunity to do that per our charter. Second of all, your comment about being hypocritical, I did submit this, and it should be in the public eye, and that's my problem right now, is why is it not? Why are we censoring the material that I want?
But that came out at eleven o'clock this morning in an email.
No, 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 that came out on Tuesday, and any small changes could be made at any time or another. If you didn't agree with it, you can vote no or just table the item.
We, we like an attendance policy.
Right, so why?
But we want to get it right.
So why can't it be on the, the agenda and then table?
Well, just as you directed, it will be for next week.
Why would we put it on the agenda and table it when we can have a finished product that you just sent out and let me do it today? Oh, I'm sorry, Sonia, I turned it off.
And if you're saying you want to make sure that the public's aware of this, then they should be able to review it too before we.
Right, so I would hope that we put materials on the agenda that are requested by other council members.
When they're done and completed, yes.
Yeah, so who defines completed?
A finished document.
Right.
Which you said it clearly was not, because you omitted a few things that you feel is not significant, but I do, I feel that they're important.
So Luke, do you have any comments on what we're discussing?
You know, Austin, I'm about done with this topic because it's, you're not getting the support of anyone that thought that this was done and that they wanted to see this on.
It's been a six or seven week process with multiple workshops and minimal comments from council people. Luke has assisted me, Bob has given some comments, which is great, but other than that, it seems like we're just delaying the process.
Well, I didn't realize.
And it's disappointing, it's really disappointing.
I don't think it's an urgent matter. We have a lot of other city business that really supersedes an attendance policy.
Right, so why, why prolong this when it's a simple attendance policy?
It would have been prolonged if you gave it to us and we tabled it because we wanted to see those changes. You made the changes, and we can move forward with it.
So could we put this on the workshop agenda next week for a vote?
We could do a special session.
On the workshop, why can't you wait till the next council meeting?
That's what you said.
Put things up, I mean, why not?
But, but what, I don't understand.
I think it's a reasonable compromise, so we can move on with the meeting.
I, if, yeah, if we could compromise in some way, I would. Let's figure something out here to end this discussion.
Well, I feel that it's not urgent enough that we have a special session at the workshop when we can put it on the next council agenda.
And I just wish you'd cooperate with everyone on the council and not tell us how you want the agenda to be. You can, you can make a motion, you can make a motion, you can make a motion to bring it to the floor, and you did not tonight.
I still requested it be on the agenda, it was not, and that is normal procedure in other municipalities, so. I would hope that we sort of define how we submit things to the agenda and how they're placed and who can place them. But I guess that's another discussion.
Well, I think you were telling the council that this was a finished document when that was incorrect.
So, I would love to see everyone's comments. Can I, uh, can I have a word that will have it on the, uh, workshop for a vote? As a special session?
Does anybody want to see it on the workshop or the next council meeting agenda?
I don't see why we can't have it for the next council meeting. I mean, but, yeah, that's the thing, it's out there, everyone knows about it, everyone knows we've been working on it.
Right, so let's put it on the next council.
You've been working on it.
Sonia, we're not taking questions on the other. We'll talk to you after the meeting. We'll talk to you after the meeting. So, we will put it on for the next council meeting agenda.
Can you say what day that is, just so we can clarify here?
It seems like we have issues.
The first Tuesday, February.
The next call, yeah.
Which is three weeks away, which is just prolonging it.
Well, we, we mean, we're not meeting on the twenty ninth, right?
No, we're not.
So it's really only two council meetings.
So that's actually three weeks away that we're waiting on.
I'm abiding by your request on the email, and that's to put it on the next, uh, workshop, the next official meeting, and you're keeping with workshop, and I don't hear the agreement there.
I, I don't know why you made it so difficult. When I had a discussion with Matt, he had referenced that you all had said not to put it on the next meeting. You wanted it at another workshop, so.
And you chose tonight to tell us that you really wanted this on tonight?
No.
Yes.
It was last week, but.
Yes, that's true.
I'll reference the email date and everything. There's documentation, so we'll move on. Sorry to keep everyone waiting. Hopefully, government changes over time, but.
This has been good, at least you get a dialogue.
At least you get a dialogue for a night, and the kids learn something from that.
I like to shock the dialogues myself.
So anyways, sorry for keeping everyone's time. Hopefully, you could follow that, and if not, feel free to ask questions later.
Any further comments tonight, Austin?
Thank you, thank you for coming, everyone.
All right, next, Alderman Bob Pecoraro, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, well, first, I, I wonder if anybody read the Gazette article about, uh, DPW not being, uh, the best Department of Public Works around, and, uh, I take, I challenge that. I challenge the company of the sidewalk people saying that they didn't get the sidewalks, uh, listing to do the work. I support Mark Zellner, and I support our Department of Public Works, and I'll defend them to the hilt on that. The second thing is the water keepers for the botanical gardens. I really appreciate the partnership that they're making with us, with the botanical garden, and moving forward with that grant. I think it's awesome. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is Destination NT. Uh, many of us went to a tour of the old G C Murphy's building, uh, last night, and, uh, met with Ralph Daley, who's developing that building. Spot Coffee's moving in, and he's got a couple of Mexican restaurants and, and many other establishments moving into that facility there. And it was great to see progress being made, especially in our downtown area, so, uh, I'm really excited about that. Um, one thing that I, I've really been working on as a, as a council member is support to the residents. I think it's absolutely, and Sonia, we talked about this at the NT Watch meeting the other day. Our hub for services really has taken off, and one thing we noticed when we did our Claro session, which is those people that need debt relief and legal assistance with that, is there were quite a few residents that needed help in that area. Well, the Western New York Law Center also recognizes that there's a need here in North Tonawanda, and they're going to set up a satellite office here one morning a month, starting in February, to provide legal advice on collections, garnishments, frozen bank accounts, other court cases and judgments related to credit card debts, medical debts, student loans, et cetera. It's a great facility, I'm, I'm glad we're able to partner with them to provide our residents that service. I believe it's on the second Tuesday of every month from ten to twelve, but I'll get, uh, further dates out to you all and have a press release, uh, for that. It's really, really great stuff that's happening to help our residents that are in need, especially in the, uh, financial area. And the last thing I want to talk about, it's going to be quite lengthy, but hopefully not controversial. But it's the two-hundredth anniversary of the birthdate of Louis Payne. So I want to talk about a brief biography of Payne to you. And you probably know there's Payne School, Payne Street, you know, uh, et cetera. Louis Payne was born in eighteen nineteen in the Tonawiga, which is now Monroe County. Uh, in eighteen thirty-five, he became a store clerk in Tonawanda, eventually owning the business. Moved to the north side of the Erie Canal and married in eighteen forty to Mary Tabor, no, Tabor Place. Um, so, some streets named after that family. Built the first steam sawmill in Tonawanda and owned extensive farmlands on the north side. He held numerous public offices. Uh, he was elected to the town of Wheatfield Supervisor, Niagara County Clerk, New York State Assembly, and New York State Senate. In eighteen sixty-one, he raised and paid for the hundredth New York infantry in the Civil War. He was commissioned a captain in the Army of the, of the Potomac. In eighteen sixty-three, while gathering intelligence, he was wounded and captured in Charleston, South Carolina, and was held in a Confederate prison camp in South Carolina. And he was released when the U S Army fought through Carolinas in March of eighteen sixty-five. Um, and, uh, then, in eighteen sixty-five, we became a village here in North Tonawanda. And, uh, in eighteen ninety, Lieutenant Colonel Payne petitioned the village board to change the name of the north-south Forest Street in the center of the village to Payne Avenue, and it was granted. Early nineteen hundreds, Colonel Payne's school opened on part of this farmland on Wheatfield Street and two, up, two blocks east of, of the Payne homestead. In other community activities, he was a vestry man at Saint Mark's Episcopal Church and member of the Tonawanda Lodge and of the Free and Accepted Masons. He was contemporary to the village officials and the first city officials when it became a city in eighteen ninety-seven. He died in eighteen ninety-eight, and he's buried in Ellong Cemetery. And I just want to pause to, uh, remember the two-hundredth anniversary of Louis Payne, and that was provided to me by a good friend of mine, David Evans, who is also a, a big, uh, guy in history. It's good to know about those who have come before us and the great things they've done on behalf of the city of North Tonawanda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Bob. Alderman Mark Barubi, any closing comments?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Alderwoman Donna Brown.
Thank you, always got to follow Bob.
Sorry.
Um, well, I, I want to start off by thanking Matt for, um, his first week here. And, um, it's a lot to take in, and I think he's done a great job so far. And there's definitely a big communication between the council and the clerk treasurer, and I have no problem communicating with the clerk treasurer. Um, I also wanted to just, um, make everybody aware, if they're not aware of, a small group, um, in our city. Um, it's the NT Neighborhood Watch. They started out, uh, back in two thousand nine as, uh, citizens on patrol, cops on patrol, and it was just in the second ward that they started. And they've been trying to expand their meetings, expand the people that are taking interest in our city. Um, they meet the second Thursday of every month at seven o'clock at, um, the Redeemer Lutheran Church on Faulkner. Now, we had our meeting there, um, Thursday, Bob was there, um, Sonia was there. Um, we have very, very small group, which they've been trying, trying really, really hard to expand their attendance at the meetings. They've gone, um, social media, and, um, Joe, who has been man in the page, has done a great job. He has over a thousand likes on the Facebook page. So, even if we had a tenth of those thousand likes come to their meetings and help them, support them, um, they do have some great ideas, but as everybody knows, if you're involved in any kind of organization, you need the people there to help make, um, their, uh, different tasks, um, come to fruition. So, I, I encourage you to come out and check out a meeting. Um, we, they're very informative, they, and you know, they have some complaints about the city, and that's why we go. Um, I try to go to as many as I can, but it's not just for the second ward anymore, it's citywide. So, anybody's, uh, more than welcome to come. And I told them that I would announce it at the council meetings, and hopefully, once we get going on the website, we can get it up on our news portal. And, um, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, um, City Attorney Luke Brown, any closing comments?
An effort, thank you.
All right, City Clerk Treasurer, Van Parrish.
Um, I would just like to, uh, thank the council, um, for everything, and especially, uh, the mayor and Luke, as, uh, I've been in and out of their office, um, offices with questions, uh, all week, but you guys all really helped my, my first pretty much full week go as smooth as I think it possibly could go. You know, the website. You know, the website, um, will be up and running again very soon, uh, but otherwise, I think everything went really well, and I just appreciate everything, and if anybody wants to, uh, stop by and get to know me, my office is right on the corner, um, I invite anybody to stop in and say hi. Otherwise, I don't have any more comments, thank you all, again.
Thank you. Yes, Mike.
I wanna back up one comment from Mr. Pecoraro. Mr. Zellner and assistant just took over, I didn't say in at least last five, six years, that Mr. Zellner and assistant and all the employees of DPW are doing a heck of a job in the city of North Tonawanda.
Thanks, people. Thanks, Mike. Thank you, uh, Mayor Ezra Papas, any closing comments?
Uh, just very briefly, um, I have to agree, Mike, and, uh, I'm, uh, very, very pleased as mayor to say that our department heads are doing one heck of a job for this city. They are going the extra mile, they're doing much more than I think at times they can really be expected to do. And this is the DPW, our police, our fire, parks and recreation, all our departments, whether it's the legal department, whether it's the code, um, economic development. I am very, very pleased as mayor, uh, for the cooperation that I have had, and the cooperation from the council, um, in support of so many things. Um, coming is, was alluded to a little earlier, right in the middle of our downtown section, with the old, uh, history museum now having been moved to Oliver Street. Uh, what's going in there is going to be, uh, a tremendous thing for this community. And being right where it is, right in that location, I think the citizens of this community are going to be very, very happy and proud to see what is coming. Uh, it's absolutely amazing on what this developer is doing, and with the tour last night, I, I could not believe uh, my eyes at the massiveness of that building, when you, uh, really get a tour, and you see the, uh, the bottom floor, the main floor, and the upper floor, it's nothing like it looks on the outside, it is massive in there, and there is so much going on and to be developed, uh, I'm pretty excited about it, I know the council is, and you will be too, I guarantee it. The, um, the other thing I'm very happy to report on is the, um, the usage of the Carnegie Arts Center. That building now is being used more and more for exactly what we had planned for, and that's the, um, introduction of more of the arts and more programs like that in the Twin Cities. Uh, it's a historic building, it's been able to be, uh, renovated to a large extent, there's still more to do on it, but it's come a tremendously long way, uh, through the efforts of their board, the efforts of volunteers, and of course, uh, again, the council and citizens of this community. Um, the activities taking place are promoting the Twin Cities, and they're promoting the arts and cultural events, uh, in this community. Tied together with the Riviera Theater and the Herschel Carousel Museum, and, um, all of our volunteers, even, even when you tie in the botanical gardens and Project Pride, all these things help the cultural and the arts uh, in, in our community, so I'm very, very happy, uh, to report on that. So, and thank you all for coming tonight, and on a very cold winter night, we appreciate you attending and your thoughts and comments, thank you.
Thank you, Art. Uh, and finally, in closing, thank you all for coming tonight, uh, we do appreciate everyone's opinions and everything that people have and their concerns, um, you know, one of the common things you see not only on the agenda, but some of the things you hear mentioned tonight, is the positive growth this city is, 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 uh, experiencing. And it is a busy, busy time, uh, we are really focused on projects, uh, NT's become a destination over the years. Uh, we've seen it, we're still seeing it, we're experiencing it, we have a housing boom in North Tonawanda. These are the things that really need to be focused on, and really dedicated our time to be sure that we are focusing on these projects and making sure that these, that we welcome these areas to our community, work with our community organizations, and as council president and as the third ward alderman, these are the things that I put at the forefront, uh, with my administration and my, uh, my time in office. So, you know, we get the things done, that's what we've been about, and that's what we're gonna continue to do. However, you know, I'm not gonna take away from some of the projects and some of the residents that need, uh, some things done, that are, you know, maybe supersede some of the other things that can wait. Um, so, I just wanted to, to say, you know, I'm very pleased about Armstrong Pumps, their commitment to the city, eighteen million dollar expansion, uh, it had been a slow roll for them to get, uh, commitment into doing this, and now we are actually getting that, that done, and we have a timeline on it. Uh, that's what we can look forward in two thousand nineteen, we've got, um, I wanna give a shout-out to the botanical gardens. It's a group that's really worked hard, it's volunteer-oriented, they're continually working with the city alongside the city to sustain and restore our botanical gardens. That's my, that's one of my hallmark examples of community service and how we work together here. Uh, and that's what it's all about, working together and communicating, uh, and I just wanna acknowledge that, you know, tonight, it's a huge thing for us to be, uh, working with the waterkeepers, and to be getting grant after grant after grant, and we've got a lot of good things coming, so look for this year, for that park to be, you know, even better than last year. And you can thank the folks that work diligently, and if you wanna contact those people to become part of this, this, uh, initiative, by all means, we all love our community and continue to do it, because they'd love to have you. Um, other than that, um, I just wanted to say thank you again for coming tonight, and, uh, we appreciate your comments, and anybody needs to approach us on anything, uh, that they have that they weren't able to get up and speak about, please, uh, we'll stick around for a while, please do so. With that, I'd like to, uh, have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.